Good morning, welcome to, whoa, we have an echo. Welcome to the July 7th, 2020 meeting. We'll start with the pledging allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, the free and just for all.
First item on our agenda is DJ Sigler. Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for placing me on the agenda this morning. I have two items for your consideration. First, they're both fairly straightforward. And I would point out neither one of these requests, these additional appropriation requests impacted county general budget. The first is a situation that's arisen with our blood test fees. Carly Lou, the head of the DFI brought to my attention not long ago that in years past, the drug-free Indiana program has fronted, if you will, the money that we use to obtain blood test fees in operating well intoxicated cases. Our responsibility is to pay part fee for those blood test fees, and then we are reimbursed those fees ultimately when a person is convicted for the crime. Now, there's always a lag in that. A couple of times somebody's charged, the time they're convicted, it could be months, it could be a year, it could be more. So DFI was running a deficit as a result, and I determined that was not a good thing either for DFI or for us. So what we did was make sure that DFI was made all Janice assisted us with that. And then what I did was asked her to create a new account, and this is pre-funding that account. So what do I mean by that? We're going to place $20,000 in that account so we can start the process of now me paying for the upfront cost of blood test fee. And then the clerk has agreed to reimburse me, and that person is charged by the court, convicted by the court. We will, we will have those fees repaid to us. So it'll just be a cyclical thing as it has in years past. That was established years ago by a couple of my predecessors, and it's worked out very well. Our conviction rate on operating well intoxicated cases hovers at near 100%. A lot of that is because we are one of the few counties in Indiana that takes both breath and blood when somebody is suspected of having operated well intoxicated. So this merely changes the the location, if you will, and the funding source for that program purely to me instead of the safe grant that DFI used. So that's my first item, and I'll take any questions on that. Oh, and excuse me, the source of the funds are prosecutor funds. The source of $2,000, again, there are no impacts.
So that comes from the state?
That money comes from me, yes. Those are monies that I have, I have received through a state program, good states.
And those funds are not going to create a deficit or a problem for you in another area?
No, sir. And again, because we're typically reimbursed, that account will run in red just because everybody that's convicted doesn't necessarily pay. So we do, we will see deficits come year to year. There's no way to avoid that.
I'm moving to approve the request.
That's okay.
I'm a motion in a second. Any further discussion? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, the same.
Thanks, gentlemen. The second item is something I'm particularly excited about to bring to your attention today. As many of you know, I've been extraordinarily fortunate to inherit a child support collection division that is among the top in Indiana. Again, I thank my predecessors for that. These ladies continue to do fantastic work day in, day out, so fantastic in fact that we receive, from the federal government, tens of thousands of dollars each year in what we call incentive funds, Title IV D incentive funds, which basically is a reimbursement from the federal government for all the hard work they do and the amount of child support we plan. When I say thousands, I mean thousands, okay? Now, up until recently, the state of the federal law has been that we could not use those funds for personnel expenses. We couldn't, we could not devote that to funding salaries, anything like that. That has changed. The federal government has said you may use that, and our state 4D enforcement unit has said that that can also be used. You just have to adopt policy. So my 4D staff and I sat down and developed a policy for incentive bonus payments to our 4D caseworkers. And Mrs. Grossnick, who heads that division, and I, I came up with the number of $3,000. Now, these are, again, federal monies that we received for our child support enforcement efforts. I will tell you again that this year, our unit has been among the top in the state. We are consistently one or two in terms of our child support collection. So what am I asking? I'm asking for an allocation of $15,000 of the federal incentive monies to pay each of these caseworkers who have worked day, night on some really tough cases for a $3,000 incentive bonus payment. Again, those are federal monies, those are not county general ones. One of the things that concerned me, and one of the things I needed to make sure of, and I'm sure you're concerned with, is I did not want that to place them outside the salary range for those who do this kind of work in Northeast Indiana. After consulting with some other prosecutors, I'm confident that is not the case, that they are still within the range of what I deem acceptable range for workers who do this type of work. However, I do think it's extraordinarily important that these ladies be rewarded for being able to do this. And that's precisely how the federal government tells me. And so I'm coming to you to ask your approval for that money to be released so that I can pay them. Our intention, my intention, is to pay that bonus in November. Why is that? Well, because it's internal staffing issues. We got an employee is going to get an anniversary date in November to make her eligible as well. So I've discussed all this with these ladies. They're aware that it is completely at your discretion at this point, and this will not be an annual automatic. This will be performance-based only. So it is at my discretion, and I warned them that I'm not inclined to do it again if for some reason our rankings should fall or our support collection numbers should go down. So I think they felt that was fair, and I think that's certainly fair, but it is not an automatic. I suspect I'll have to come each year before you. So I'm happy to entertain any questions on that.
Historically, what have you used those funds for?
Historically, we've used them for training, used them for to send caseworkers travel to train. We've used it for car computer costs, equipment costs, things like that. We've replaced office furniture. Those are typically what those funds have been used for. But it's really created a quandary. We have to, we have to, if we don't use the funds, we use the funds based after a period of years. So we have run a surplus because we've not been able to use all of the funds each, each and every year. So at least as it relates to this, now this gives us another, another place to use, even though we buy so many computers and desktops. So that was, that was another interesting facet of the change.
And the policy that was required is internal to your office?
It is internal, yes, sir. Yeah, yeah. And we have prepared that and it has been approved by the state.
Would this require a change in our salary ordinance?
I do not actually know. Just simply because I don't think we, I don't, since I've been here, we haven't done a performance bonus, even though it is possible, obviously, because I know I even talked to Jeff Dawson and everything about the 4D program. But we probably need, yeah, we probably do need salary ordinance amendments, which I can get those too if you guys approve it, and just, we just need to sign them, so.
One of the reasons I wanted to bring it to you is July.
So it's seeming to me that if we need an amendment, we should pass the amendment before we pass the appropriation.
So we should wait until we get that all done?
And I'd be happy to return if this necessary, in which we have to be appropriate of that. Just as far as I'm concerned, based upon our desire to do this in November, we've got, we've got time. So I'd be happy to.
I'd feel more comfortable with that with us looking into what that means for salary ordinance and.
Absolutely. No, I completely understand. I'll just, I'll work with Janet to make sure you have that prior to the next meeting, and then I'll be back to remind you what I said today.
That sounds great.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen.
You're good.
Morning. I'm Kevin, reporting today to hopefully move forward with rehire of a defined officer that we parted way with on March 25th of this year. March 25th was the same day of our first restrictions of the COVID stuff at the jail. They were revised in April and then in May, and just this week we opened our lobby to the general public again by appointment. And now I feel comfortable enough to bring people back in to interview. That's why we didn't ask right away. So this is a position that was already in the budget. Like I said, we just parted way with an employee on March 25th of this year.
So what do you need out of us if we've already okayed this position?
Well, we were under, the way I think we were under a hiring freeze.
That's right, yeah. So we implemented a hiring freeze based on the unknown with the COVID.
But even with, this position is not new. It's an old position. Even the hiring freeze would, would affect that, even though it wasn't.
I make a motion that we approve the opening of a hiring of a new jailer, an additional.
Rehiring.
Rehire.
For filling the position.
Filling the open position. So I have a motion to fill the open position.
Thank you. Not as already in your budget and everything for the year, so. How's that affected your operations here through this, Mark?
Sean, could you elaborate a little on the schedule? As far as the schedule goes, if we have to move back to our 12-hour schedule for anything like this, then we're short people. Obviously, with a rehire of a new person, they're not going to be immediately available to work for. There's requirements that we train prior to that. So at this time, it's leaning back for schedule filling, vacations, things like that. It's tight now with all the vacations that we have to fill during the summer. So getting that position back will be comparative to get proper coverage when people are on vacation. Because right now, we're running on three people per shift, which is the bare minimum, and the amount of work that's, that's there is, is too many for the three.
So it hasn't cost you a lot of overtime, though? I mean, it's just kind of been a wash since you weren't paying the salary, maybe?
In the beginning, it did because we had two that weren't released that we got hired after the first year of replacement in these positions. They're actually working, but they're not actually, we consider to be by themselves, so they always have to shadow somebody. So we did have to pay a little during that time.
And Sean, was the population, it's increased over the COVID period. So where are we averaging now?
Today, we're at 103. So we're back up over capacity. So it's, that's back in full swing.
I do have a motion.
One second.
I have a second. So I have a motion to refill the open position with a second. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, the same.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Paula Worden and Paula Remmers. Good morning.
Good morning. And you should receive in your packet a copy of the grant that we are offered from Indiana Support Services to Supreme Court. There are three things that we need to address and get your approval on. There's the pre-trial coordinator wage, which is already in place. That's my salary. There is the pre-trial case manager wage. That is an employee of ours that we share with Community Corrections. She's a case manager and does a lot of our consulting and reporting, everything. And then the third one, which is a new position, is the pre-trial assistant slash caseworker. What I'm finding is our part timer, so right now we're at one and a half, and our part timer, the case manager, also has 400 hours of downtime, it's a fair PTO time. And so what happens is she can take off a lot of time this summer, and I'm left with trying to do everything. So it's very, very important that we have some form of backup with as busy as we are. Currently, we have 238 people that we supervise on pre-trial services. And this, the funding, funding period is July 1st to June 30th of next year, and I believe those monies have already been deposited. Is that correct, Janet?
Um, yes.
Okay. And, and then the other thing, a very important part of our approval is the public defense counsel contact. And what that is, is this gives all of the defendants, most of the defendants, a, an opportunity to have their public defense and the counsel to work with them during their initial hearing.
This is all covered, but from the grant money?
Yes, it is.
What about in the future?
Yeah, we've discussed that. I've talked to, chat about that as well, and maybe some of you is, you know, that would just have to be reviewed when that comes time. I know that that's a big concern always for the council, and I can understand why. There are a lot of grant employees, and I think it's just a matter of working together to figure out, you know, the best thing, best way to handle that if they were to cease.
It's a year-to-year application?
Yes.
What what's your insight? What's your feelings on how long this grant is going to be viable?
They, the Indiana Office of Support Services and the Supreme Court, they are very pro pre-trial. They wanted, you know, ways to handle that, and I'm sure Judge Hoff could speak on that as well.
And that's a great question. I will tell you that it's under AR 26, Administration Rule 26, Justice Stephen David pushed this from the beginning. This is a huge program from the state. We never can guarantee grants, but we were told recently by one of the advisors, we're one of the top three counties for doing pre-trial services. And as far as if there's any program, let it continue to be funded, I had to bet my money on it, it could be this pre-trial services program. It's a way of going across the country to eliminate the bond, the cash bond system, and go to a pre-trial services program. And we were one of the, not every county was given the grant based on our performance and what our stakeholders have done to set the setup, we were given that grant. So I could never guarantee you any of you that the grant will continue forever, but if there's one that I would be willing to put money on, it could be this one. So hopefully that helps.
At the expense of being deducted from your budget?
And as a member of the stakeholders group, this isn't mandated, but it appears like it's going to go that way across the state. This will be a requirement that every county eventually adopt, and we know how the state sometimes mandates things and then later forgets to fund them. But I don't see that happening for a while.
Who does have to take a look at it next year?
Yeah, that was a conversation that I had had with Paula's. I'm in favor of this. I think this is a good thing, and I understand that it's fully grant funded. So that would be a tough decision next year, assuming that you didn't receive the grant, we didn't receive the grant, then. But at this point, I'm in full favor of this.
In the recent Paula's position, obviously, it was already approved for the 2020 budget, but it wasn't approved at the new salary when we reclassified. And so we do have the funding now to pay her where she came in in the new classification system. So that's why there's amendment for her position as well.
Mr. Chair, should we address these separately? What works best? We can do this separately. Separate from this. All right, I make a motion that we approve the additional appropriation request.
All three of them?
Just, just originally, we'll do the salaries separately.
I'll second that.
I have a motion of second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, the same. Mr. Chair, are you ready for another? Sure. I would make a motion that we approve the amendment to the salary ordinance for these two positions that are ultimately a part of the Community Corrections Department. It's funded pre-trial services. I have a motion, a second from Councilman over here. Any further discussion? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, the same, and that last question. Anything else?
As far as the hiring freeze, we were already down, we did not fill one of our full-time residential shift supervisor during the COVID, when we were shut down. So when we were down a full time, we are losing, I found out this morning before I came, we're losing one to the new Allen County Community Corrections Residential Facility. And we're also losing Cody Frye, our Veterans Treatment Court, or need to Allen County's residential facility. So I have minimum three full-time positions that I need to pay that. They're existing positions, not new. In my part-time, the residential is, I currently have any part-time. So if we could start with the full-time, that'd be great.
So you're asking to fill three full-time positions that are open or going to be open that it's in the budget, but it's directly reflected by the hiring freeze that we have right now?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve that. Second?
I have a motion from Hodges, second from Warner. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, the same, and that's the same.
What's your population?
We have 35. 35, and we're releasing 33 on home detention. So we're bringing back a couple each day.
In your, your capacity based on the current COVID.
Yeah, we're trying to, yeah, just limiting how many are in the room and having quarantine units. Obviously, I'm just, you know, going by what the, you know, the governors came a little direction and what Amy and Scott are saying, and, you know. So we keep adding. We did have one excond over the weekend. So.
When all the restrictions go off, what is the maximum?
We can have 100 out there.
Hundreds?
Yeah.
And do you anticipate the courts having people available?
Oh, yeah. I think the jail has people available, too.
That's actually a great question. We have actually been allowed sentencing deferred report dates on cases until late July and into August to accommodate the re-integration of the workplace facility. So those folks, rather than go straight to incarceration, they go on to probation, and then they'll still have to do their period of incarceration. We've just tried to stagger it, and we've also set it out to the point where we're hoping that things will be back to what is going to be the new normal. But it will start filling back up towards the end of this month and then going in August.
How many do you have floating around out there that are?
I would say there, there are probably about less than 10 that are going to be serving a long enough period to go to work release, but the jail will see influxes from weekend reports from your standard first-time DUI folks, probably 20 to 30 over the next couple of months. Folks who have received the two weekends of incarceration, which is a standard first-time offense, did usually report that weekend and the next weekend, they're going to be reporting into July and August. With work release, I think we're right around 10, if you will, at least.
Mark, in your 103 that you've got right now, how many, in your experience, if there was no such thing, or we were pre-COVID, would those people actually be at work release? Just to, just to guess.
Probably more females than males.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would guess we try and get rid of, we realize that they could be.
That would really have you back down in a comfortable range.
Yeah, but within a month and a half, we'll get five back. Thanks, Mr. Pat.
Still a 50% success rate.
It's just we are femaleing. It's, it's hard to really separate because it's dorm style. So that's why we're at nine versus 27 to 24. Now, we'll do whatever, anybody, you know, I'm not an expert at this. I'm just trying to take it slow so we don't reopen too fast, and then I have to put all that back in the judges and prosecutor to try to empty it again. So I'm open to suggestions on any kind.
And I think we had three come in from yesterday till this morning, and I bet one of those will probably qualify for pre-trial.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott, I'm going to do you on the spot. I'm going to throw you in right now.
Okay.
Can you talk at all about this letter that?
And in general, other pushing I have. So Tim gave me a copy of the letter he received from a county resident regarding libraries and other government facilities. It is my understanding that commissioners can mandate mask wearing in facilities, government facilities in the county if they so wish. I don't think that would be to your best interest at this time, and I'll give you a couple of reasons why. Just like this room today, we take it away in a mandatory seating policy. We've left that to the responsibility of the adults in this room. And they are in charge of their own health, and that they choose to come in here. They may or may not disclose themselves, can wear a mask to protect themselves if they so wish. But what we're seeing in our, in our area right now is what we do call every person's tested positive. Is we're seeing a majority of people with an illness that has those symptoms at all are very mild ones. For those individuals who are over, and I'm going to say 50, and over, it's pretty much in that 50 range. So those who are late 50s and older, people with health issues, we are seeing them being in the area of severe illness to death in our state. So if you take 50 and older, that's 97% of all the who passed away in our state. So it's dramatically that end of the spectrum for age that you're seeing severe illness and death. Right now, Littler County, we're seeing more of our homeless populations as well as range Allen Noble, as well as some for these populations in Allen County who are being affected right now, the hospitals are pretty full with those individuals. And what we're telling people is they're kind of seeing, they're kind of lack of genuine, like we, they're just getting freshly exposed to that with all their large gatherings. And now it's spread around their population. So a lot of them haven't been exposed. There's not a lot of immunity. I would say right now, 30, 40% of Littler County have been exposed to that. We're getting higher numbers as we go along. Or a test where we can take it and say, either yes, you do have right now, or no, you've been exposed, and I have to do separate tests. Then that would really give us a good idea of how that has spread already to everyone. But again, we call everybody, and that's most of the feedback we get. In fact, we even had some seniors who have had the virus on the hospital for a couple of days, came out, they both, they've recovered well. So I do think that the virus is weakening us. We did have heard reported on the news. As far as mandating right now, I don't think it's necessary. I think that individuals can take precautions on that, oh, if they choose, they can go during hours that maybe, there's not as many people there. They can wear masks, they can use online services if possible. Right now, I don't, I don't see. Right now, I don't, I don't see situation where we need to. If we had two hundred cases in a week, we should already maybe even close down some things just to stop that, that spur. But right now, I don't see that. So that would be my guidance to you. Any questions?
Do governmental units have the authority individually without the council and commissioners acting to mandate?
I, I think so. If Mary wanted to close Peabody because she had three or four personnel come down with it and she thought that was the best protocol and you guys agreed with her, I think she could do that. If, if we had four offices of positive people in this building that might say, hey, we need to be off for a week, let it cool down.
And it doesn't really need action from commissioners?
I'm not seeing that today. My current numbers.
This would be a decision for the commissioners to make rather than us a council.
Correct. I think you want to make that decision all together because it's more, at least hopefully, it considers the situation better. But yes, they officially would be the, the agency that would say, hey, we're closing the courthouse, we're closing the government center, or the library. And even if you're talking, if you're talking to library, you want to talk with the chair of the town council, you want to talk with the chair of the school, our students, the township trustee, things like that. So all minds involved.
We have one library that does demand. They even got a person to stand at the door.
Yeah, correct. So I think, you know, they can't take those precautions themselves.
So the Musco Library could do that.
They could. Yeah.
They don't need that.
And you know, and we don't need to have a government telling us to do this. It's just out of general courtesy to hear about what person.
So we should communicate to the constituent that that is a local library decision with consultation of their town leadership.
Yeah, me appropriate that it came from you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Scott. Next up, we have the Declaration of Fiscal Body. Vicki?
Vicki here.
Good morning. You should have a copy of the Declaration of Fiscal Body. This is a requirement from the recently passed Senate of the Roll Act 410. The last legislative session had some, some things in it about public libraries. One of them is that we have this sign saying, if our budget came up for binding review, who would do that binding review? And so as you can see, it's spelled out on the sheet that you have. When is what happened? Our board signed off on it at their June meeting. And so all that needs to be done by you is to verify that if the South Littler Community Public Library's budget were to come under binding review, you would be the entity that would do that binding review.
We just need you to agree to do it. That's all you want.
Yes.
So this isn't putting us in any sort of a decision-making position for your organization out of the fact of just this one issue?
Right, exactly. That was what was covered in Senate of the Roll Act 410. It was signed by the governor, I believe it's Public Law eighty-eight.
Just providing an additional level of fiscal oversight when necessary.
Exactly.
Make a motion that we would give our council chair the responsibility of signing off on this for them.
Second. I have a motion and second. Any further? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand and oppose the same. And I will remind council that we also have a request from Peabody Public Library for this very thing. They would like for us to also be there binding review.
And make a motion that, for the Peabody Public Library, become their fiscal binding. Second, you please.
I have a motion and second for Peabody as well. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand and oppose the same and then also pass. Store insurance.
Morning.
Good morning.
Wesley Robinson, Jordan Martin comes our insurance, just here to give you an update on the county's insurance program. Because it did come up for renewal. The health insurance came up in August. We just went through open enrollment last week. Actually, we did vet it out. We always do. It made sense to stay in the current program to continue with unit by group services for another year. Actually, the plan's running really, really well. The county and the commissioner's budget, they, we've worked with them, they're fully funded. So if the wheels would fall off the bus, the money would be there. Okay? Been lucky enough that the plan's been running well enough that we've been able to take three payments out of the trust account to pay for the actual premiums every month. So we did that in December. I think we did one in March and then we did one just last month. So there's still a nice reserve still in the account for those claims if something were to catch up or to happen. The dental and vision plan, we were able to come in, no rate increase on that. Actually, we made some really good improvements for the employees. And then the voluntary life, because we have fifteen thousand dollars worth of life insurance and they can buy additional life. That was pretty cool this year. They could actually get twenty thousand dollars of extra coverage on themselves and their spouses. And that was very successful because a lot of individuals prior were not able to get life insurance because they had to fill out a statement of health. This was just open. So that's, we're finishing up. Actually, I'm working with Gianna and Michelle to finish everything up, to get the final information in. But just wanted to come in and give you an update. The plan's running well. We didn't have, we loaded, actually making deductible changes. It didn't make sense this year. It was, the savings wasn't great enough to put it back on the employees. So we made the decision to keep everything status quo. Actually, the rates were lower because we made some other adjustments to the plan. So employees continue to, we continue to monitor it every month, hoping that we can do on the background so that you guys don't see that. But when things come up, we're involved, engage with the employees, engage with spouses, just to make sure that everything, to help protect the reserve that's in the trust account. So just wanted to give you an update. We're here locally. So if any of you ever want to get involved or have questions on what the health plan looks like, we can definitely help out with that.
I'll ask Don. Are you satisfied?
That's great. I just got a report yesterday. Let me go back to five or six years ago. We had twenty-nine thousand dollars in the pot, which would be wiped out in two and a half minutes. Yesterday, after we've made three payments from the plan, not from tax money, from the plan, we have four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in the program. So it's going to be a huge, the insurance, the health insurance this year is going to be a huge savings to the county.
I think when we compare it.
I'm sorry, listen, but I think we need to, we need to thank the employees.
Absolutely.
The employees have really figured out, if I don't need to go to the ER, if I go to convenience clinic, I don't need to go to the ER. You know, it's better. The employees have brought this on themselves. This is not something that's been mandated. They just, employees have been wonderful.
Yep. Their, their employees are very good about calling and asking questions, which is a good thing. If they need assistance or if they, hey, I need to have this done, can you help me with this? They're really taking it upon themselves to look at what is best for them and best for the county. So definitely. And I think that going back to five years ago, when we looked at the budget, we're still like below where we were at five years ago for claims costs. So that just goes back to the employees and being more conscious and looking at their health plan.
I have a question for you. Carla Ru is actually on the agenda next to present to the council her ideas for a wellness program.
Yep.
What could that do? A countywide wellness program to help us with our insurance rates? Could it lower our rates?
Absolutely, absolutely. So you're not going to see a return of investment probably for three years on, though. But if Carly's program, you know, integrates in with the county, the employees, you know, if we catch one diabetic before they have a stroke, half a million dollar claim. I mean, what you're paying out for the wellness program is going to help prevent those types of situations. So being proactive on the front end will help catch those claims before they ever happen. So what she's got as far as the program, I can tell you is going to work, you know, and it's going to take some time. You know, you're not going to see it first year. I can guarantee you that. They say usually a three-year return on investment before we catch that fake claim that's going to happen. And we're going to know that the program works because we're going to catch it on the front end to say, yes, this is what was caught. This is caught in the blood work. And you know what? You prevented that half a million dollar claim.
So you think by year three or thereabouts that this program will be paying for itself?
Absolutely, absolutely.
At no cost, even with the incentives that we're going to be asked to pay out to the employees?
Yep, absolutely. You can get, the more folks that you can get involved, and I think that it's going to take that three-year timeframe for employees to get excited and get engaged. But you're going to see that return, where you're not going to have to have any additional funding for it.
Can the wellness plan be funded out of the trust or, that a question to be researched?
We could, we could definitely do that if that would be approved. Absolutely.
And it.
Because it's a medical expense. You're, you're funding it for medical purposes. Absolutely.
And in that case, there, we have employees that are not on the insurance plan. Would that have to be separated out and be complicated for you guys?
Carly, was it, were given the incentive for everybody, only employees that are on the insurance?
But everyone can participate?
So and Carly and I have already started working together just to give her an idea on the health side, what, what her wellness package and health. And we'll continue to work together if it gets approved to give ideas and so that we can make sure that we're focusing on the pieces that need to be focused on.
So this can be revenue neutral immediately?
What, what danger do you see in using that fund to pay out benefits to someone who's met a certain threshold? Do you think that the, the program is going to be big enough to compromise going back down to a level that?
I don't, I don't, no. There's enough reserve in that account and employees are doing the right thing. And especially if they're wanting to improve on their health, it's going to help the account in the long run because we're going to see less claims come through.
And if the fund begins to have any issues, you're going to report that to the commissioner.
Absolutely. Actually, they get, they get a weekly report on where the funds at. Yep. And then we do a monthly overview just to give an overview of where the plan's at as well. We're not going to leave you hanging. I promise.
We know where your office is.
Yeah. Yep. So just want to give you an update. Thank you for your time this morning. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, hopefully I can answer some questions here. So you should have a full packet of information that Jana sent you guys. Since twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, I sent out a wellness survey that included a question if people would be interested in participating in a wellness program at work. And I think it was eighty-three percent in the first year, eighty-five percent in the second year, I said yes. So started a wellness committee for the county and that has representatives from pretty much each major building. So we have Jennifer and I that sit on it consistently. But then we have a representative, so April Law serves for the government center. We have the highway department representative. We have a sheriff's department representative for the extension. So we're kind of bouncing around at the courthouse. And these are just their different building representatives. That way people know where to direct questions and it's not just going to one individual person, but they have someone that's pretty local to where, where they're working at. So for this program, we are looking at a, we're suggesting a premium discount. So for county employees that are on county insurance and their spouses that are on county insurance, we're suggesting a ten percent reduction for employees. If they complete the program, they're in the points. They do all the things they're required to do and five percent for their spouses. There's difference in points that they need to complete. So for employees, it'd be fifty points in that program packet that you guys got. And for spouses, it'd be thirty points. If both spouses are county employees, we suggest they both are able to complete the fifty points and attend and tend. The program's going to focus on holistic health and have different monthly health challenges. It's going to have various health screenings. It's trying to, again, be pretty holistic. We're looking at emotional wellbeing. We're looking at physical health, too. There's a few different things that are mandatory in this, and one of those is the physical, it's the blood draw, and it's the post-screening consult. So you have a packet from Parkview as well, if you got a chance to look at that. We're looking at the consultations package, which is thirty-five dollars per participant and the comprehensive wellness profile, which is twenty-two dollars per participant. And then an additional dollar for them to calculate the points for us. That way we're not getting any HIPAA information or anything like that. But we'd incentivize people for having good blood pressure, good cholesterol, sugar, things like that. So they could earn points. I think it's seven points for just going and getting the blood draw, but additional points, you know, if you have good blood work that comes back. So again, incentivizing good health, not just going and getting your blood work done. Um, for Parkview, they're going to assess, you know, height, weight, blood pressure. They'll do that basic metabolic panel. This comes out to fifty-eight dollars per person that's going to participate in it. It's really hard to guess how many people can participate in this. You know, I can look at, I don't have the numbers for this year, but we had, I think Ed said a hundred and forty-six last year, which totals to eight thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. If every single employee and spouse that was on county insurance participated in the program. And that's for the blood work thing for Parkview. Again, I don't know how many people would enroll in this program the first year. I expect that it would probably be less the first year. And if people become more aware of it, then people, more people would start to enroll in the program. And even if they do enroll in the program, it doesn't mean that they're going to complete all of the points and all of the required screening things that they're supposed to do.
Is the county going to cover the fifty-eight dollars or is that going to come out of the employees' pocket?
That's what we're looking at. Yeah, for the county to cover that cost.
Okay.
I think that would be an important factor in getting the participation numbers up and to work maybe faster towards our.
Yeah.
Turnaround with.
That's going to be the thing that's going to save you the most money right there is knowing your numbers. And that post-screening consult is where they're required to come back and they're going to talk to a Parkview employee for about ten to fifteen minutes and go over what those numbers mean and how they can improve those numbers. That's the big thing right there is to be able to catch it and understand what those numbers are.
So you're not, this is not mandatory for the employee?
If they're on county insurance and want to participate in this program, then they have to do the blood draw.
Okay, so we pay the county, does, does employee pay a monthly insurance premium? Do we charge them by the week? Okay, bi-weekly. Okay. So then you have, then they have deductibles, correct? Okay. So could you put in, 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 where my appointment, what we did was they made your deductible a little less if you participated in this. If you didn't, your deductible was high. But it wouldn't be until the next year.
So if everybody participated in two thousand twenty-one, then two thousand twenty-two, you can see that ten percent reduction on your monthly premium.
Okay. Yeah, that's a way to get them all to participate to give. And then on the spouses, if they're not an employee of the county, are you going to let the spouses participate? But, but if they're not, what, but would you allow them to, they can come get their blood draw, but charge them the fifty-eight dollars? Because. Because.
Yeah, they might charge more if you have more people that come because they'll require more staffing to be here.
I would ask them.
Yeah, I could look into it.
Yeah, I mean, blood work with Parkview is generally hundreds of dollars, so probably not.
I can tell you, we did an analysis on this. Not me to interrupt, but the $58 even for some of the labs that are included, some of them are $400 apiece. So for a $58 investment that you're paying out of the trust fund for those employees, you would pay $400 out of the trust fund if the employees were to go to Parkview to get the same exact lab done.
But you said that, okay, let's, so I can get this straight. You have an employee, then you have the spouse, but is not an employee of the county, but is on county insurance. So they can be in the program?
Yes. It's mainly coming back to county insurance. If they're on county insurance, you guys are just going to see a direct benefit to it so they can be in the program.
Okay.
And so this will be a one-day event. Parkview will come in. They'll set up probably downstairs in room A or B. And they'll have different partitions and people will have to register for a select time to come get their blood drawn and do that quick assessment, you know, the blood pressure, thing like that. So people will know ahead of time. They'll select their appointment. They'll know to keep that day in their calendar for employees and spouses that have to be here. It's usually pretty early in the morning, like a six to eight, six to nine kind of thing. Because you do have to fast for it. So people usually want to eat their breakfast after that. So that's one of the costs there, like, you know, the bi-weekly premium reduction if they do get the points. That won't be seen until, you know, one year later. The other thing that we're looking for for costs, just to keep things organized, is for folders. I don't know where that money would necessarily come from, but what we're looking at doing. I'm in this packet here. Just put into a different folder, employees would all get this folder. Should be just a one-time cost per person. They're going to keep it each time that they go to the doctor. They'll bring this in, get it stamped by their doctor. If they forget to get it stamped, that's totally fine. They can put in a receipt in the back of that folder and they'll turn it into their wellness committee representative and we'll tally the points from there. We're just dividing the work. It gets to be a lot of paperwork and I don't want more paperwork than you need to be. So if we just stamp it by the doctor, then that's going to be a little bit easier. We're not allowing them to sign off because it's pretty easy to forge a signature for that kind of thing, especially a doctor's signature. So we're recommending that they stamp it. We're also going to have them attend a class so we can go over this whole packet, what exactly they need to do, what's expected of them, the benefits that come from it as well. So I'll be hosting some of those classes in different buildings. But yeah, I attached a couple different things on there too about how this is a money savings program. And I know you already heard that from Leslie. We're spending most of our money in the preventable things. We're spending it in stroke, diabetes and GERD reflux. So you have a lot in diabetes. There's research studies saying that from the American Diabetes Association, if a normal person with diabetes is spending about $16,752 a year, their $9,601 is directly attributed to diabetes alone. So you can prevent that diabetes diagnosis. That's going to be a huge savings. Once you have diabetes, I mean, that's year after year that you're going to see those costs. So that's what we're trying to prevent. Like Leslie said, you know, you might not see it for three years and you're probably going to see more of an increase in those preventable things. You know, you're getting your blood drawn, you're getting a physical, things like that. But that's a lot better than a diabetes diagnosis. So that's what we're looking at for that. Looking out long term.
So is this program ready to go? Are you ready to implement it? You got everything you need? Who is going to be in charge ultimately if one of your second-line supervisors, the people that are going to tally the points and collect the folders? If they're on vacation or they cease employment or something, who's going to take over that to make sure that everybody is being tracked in the program?
Jennifer and I. So Jennifer and I are like two bonus representatives for the government center. So we can kind of divide the work for buildings that are much bigger than others and they're supervising more people that would be enrolled in the program. I mean, I can't guarantee you right now how many people would be in the program. You know, if we have every government center employee in, but nothing from the sheriff's department, then, you know, that's not necessarily fair division of work. I'm kind of guessing right now on what that's going to look like. Jennifer and I are kind of floaters for what that would be. And then I'll be supervising, making sure everything's tallied up right. And they do have to, I forgot to say, they do have to have a minimum of one point per month, which should be pretty easy to do. I have, you know, monthly worksheets, I guess, in the back of that. That's pretty easy to do on different goal-setting things, just to keep that one point. And that way they're still active in the program. That way they're not racking up all their points in March and then done for the rest of the year.
We have an idea of what the percentage of employees are on the county insurance program.
From last year, I mean, I think it was 146 for county employees and spouses that are on insurance. And that's what I heard from Ed, but I don't know 2020 numbers.
And our total number of employees are?
About 215.
215?
215.
So a lot of cities plan. They have about 85% employee.
So if I understand it right, and this is funded through the trust fund, that would be a commissioner's action. So what is required of the council today? If we?
I don't think we realized it could come through the insurance trust, so.
So if we're just to make a motion of support for the program? Yeah, that's, you know, that's where we want the funding to come from, which makes sense.
I think that it would probably be wise to leave this open to come back to us if the commissioners would not fund it through or choose not to fund for some reason through that means for us to still have a decision in how we would otherwise fund it. But I don't think that's probably an issue. I just want to make sure we have that on the table.
So how would you like the report?
Make a motion that we send a favorable approval to the commissioners to pay for it out of the insurance trust.
Second motion.
Right. I have a motion and a second amendment to offer. We should then amend it if Thor had said that if, in fact, it's not at any point funded through the insurance trust fund, that we would address it as part of the budget process. Is that acceptable to you?
Yes, I will graciously accept that amendment onto my initial.
I have a motion of a second. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. It goes the same and that also passes 7-0.
And I'm ready to go for that. I need to talk to you guys, talk to commissioners on when to start hosting this classes and start the official start date for the program.
You need to go to the commissioners and get the approval on how it's going to be funded and their approval to initiate the program.
All right. The second thing I'm here for is representing Drug Free Indiana. Our coordinating council, Indiana Criminal Justice Institute has approved our comprehensive plan and their fund sheet. There is one change here though in that treatment intervention section. Addiction Recovery Centers of Indiana are no longer going to be serving county. So they have to go through their grant application. So that will just drop to $8,000 for pregnant intervention section. And that's all I have for that. All the other things are the same. And this is the thing that DJ was talking about at the beginning, is that organization.
So their lack of participation, how has that negatively impacted the program?
The whole positively impact our program because there will be less numbers to move around and less headaches to do that, so.
Anything else?
I think I need to have a vote from years past, what I'm told at least.
If I remember correctly, on Drug Free Indiana has their own budget committee who has approved this and that just came in before us as a recommendation. And I will make a motion that we approve the Drug Free Indiana information and allow them to do that through the budget process.
Second. Did you get that? All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. It goes the same and that will also pass as 7-0. Thanks, Carly. Next up are the commissioners.
So did you want to go over longevity?
Yeah, we can skip that for now and for longevity.
Yeah, so as you guys can see, I gave this spreadsheet for longevity for this year. We are requesting that lengthy longevity payday be November 17th of this year. As you can see on the very back page, you can see how much is coming out of each fund. County general, there will be $50,100 coming out of there. And then the total for all of the funds is 91,500 for this year. So I just need your approval for the longevity payday to be November 17th.
Yeah, how about the third one?
I believe it is a little bit lower.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the longevity payday of November 17th. I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. It goes the same. Don, are you ready to talk about performance services and SDS?
Sure, thank you. Appreciate it. Zach, actually, this is me too. So with the COVID-19 thing, the commissioners just sort of marked time for about two months or so. Couldn't really get in the meat of anything. So now we feel like we can get back in, maybe try to get some work done. One of the first things that we look at is the, goes back to jail overcrowding. And we felt like what we needed was a needs assessment. What does this county need now? What's it going to need in 20 years? We have signed a contract with Performance Services. And Jim and Joe are here this morning. If you have questions for them, they're going to do the needs assessment for us. And the funds to complete this should come from the jail tax because that's what we're, that's what we're working towards. And so Jim, Joe, you guys want to just kind of mention anything?
What's the, what's the cost of that, Don? Is it a flat fee or is it dependent on what they?
That fee, it was in the $80,000 range. They made us a deal at $49,000.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Joe Morak with Secure Techure. Briefly, the study that we're undertaking is a four-step process. And it's not just a study on the jail. It's a study on the justice system in general. So we'll be looking at the courts. We'll be looking at community corrections. We'll be looking at the jail. We'll be looking at things that don't exist yet. So what we're doing is looking, you know, as you, as you hear on TV and so forth all the time, the justice system in this country is changing. And, you know, there's questions out there, is where best do we put inmates? You know, or where are people best served? Are they best served in jail? Are they best served in a residential treatment program, some kind of, you know, non-residential treatment program? Where are they best served and what of those services exist in the community now? And which of those services might there be interest in partnering with other members of the community for governmental services to provide these services? So the four steps of the process, and this is roughly a four to six-month study. Step one is an organizational element, you know, getting our team organized, getting data collected and so forth. Step two is strategic planning and visioning, where we will analyze the data, make projections. We're going to be asking the courts and the jail, community corrections and several other people for 10 years of data. And we will project a needs 20 years out. Now, that's pretty hard, you know. You need a crystal ball to do that. And if I was really good at that, I'd be playing the lot instead. But, you know, we try to collect the data and establish trends. And in today's world, it's hard to establish trends because the justice system has been changing. The way your courts and your law enforcement has been doing business over the last few years is different than it was 10 years ago. So how's that changed? Why's it changed? Was legislation done? Sensing guideline changes about five years ago, so change things. So we'll be looking at the data and making projections and building a continuum of services that exists now. And this is a very interactive process. We'll have meetings every few weeks with the committee that we'll be working with and establishing, here's what we have now, here's how we're conducting business now. How do we want to do business in the future? Then from that, we build what this new justice system or modified justice system would look like. Then we'll go into staffing and space programming. What are staff implications? What are operational implications, cost implications of this? And then finally, the last step is the step of, okay, now that we have this vision, what kind of facilities do we need to support that? And what are those costs and those operating expenses and staff expenses as well? So, you know, my background, and I'm sorry I skipped over that, I am an architect. My company, Secure Techure, is just corrections and public safety is the only work we do. It's all we do. And I've been doing this for about 39 years now. Designed well over 100 jails. I've done about 250 of these studies. Designed several court systems, things of that nature.
Thank you. We're pretty excited. We feel like now we're getting back moving again, working towards it. And so again, we'd like to use jail tax money. Their cost is about one-third of one month's tax. So that's where we are.
So you see this as being a four to six-month project with about nine local meetings?
Well, probably, we haven't established our meeting schedule yet. We haven't had a kickoff meeting yet. But we'll meet every two, three or four weeks, depending on the schedule. We're in the process of putting together what the agendas for each of those meetings are in advance. So probably with the overall committee, we would meet at least once a month. But with user groups, we would meet on a more regular basis, maybe every two weeks with the user groups, especially to build the analytics and so forth.
The most important part is really the data collection and getting all that information upfront from the courts and community corrections from the sheriff's office. So really, the better the information we get and gather, and we're pretty good about working through that, the better information we'll have to kind of make recommendations. And really, this is a discovery process. We're working with more county clubs and the exact same thing. We really don't know what to do at this point, but it really is a discovery process to help you guys see potentially what it looks like in 20 years and what it looks like from community corrections and the sheriff's office. And we're here really just to serve you guys to see what the best solution is for the county. If that's clear to you, then that's more than enough.
So will you give a recommendation on what you think we need to focus on building? Whether it be a new jail or community corrections or whatever?
Yes, renovating or whatever.
You'll give us all that?
Really, we're here to solve, you know, help you guys solve your problems.
We get a lot of feedback from the public on watching these meetings, probably more so now with the COVID than any other time. So I know there's going to be people that are going to listen to this meeting and have an opinion or want to do some input. A lot of times they'll get back with us and share that with us. But would part of the process being some sort of an open forum meeting for the public to be educated and to have input or ideas, which may be way off base, but there might be something that comes from that too? Would that be part of the process?
Yes, that part of, part of the process is what we call visioning session. Yes, that part of, part of the process is what we call visioning session. And that will involve several different groups and groups of groups. You know, obviously, you know, the committee needs to be involved. The committee is, would be made up of, you know, the judges and the prosecutor and sheriff, community corrections and people such as that that are within the system. But also, you know, there needs to be feedback from the larger community as well. And some of those will be members of the public. Some of those would be potential providers of mental health services, maybe local hospitals, other providers that might want to partner with the county. And so that will be designed in. It's one of those things that not every step of the way is going to be necessarily a public input session, but there will be that opportunity.
So it doesn't have to be just somebody that, there'll be a session for people who aren't necessarily on one of these boards or from one of these occupations, just a taxpayer that could come in and sit down and have it explained to them or or get their two sons.
Certainly, and that would be in the the visioning session stage.
But I, I would say for those people, because you're referring to people who are watching right now, that you want to watch right now.
Yeah, anyone.
So I would encourage them to bring their comments to us immediately. You know, let's start out with, let's start out with the, uh, the field, the community. So that would be my recommendation to anybody watching this. If you have an issue or you have a want to tell us we're doing the right thing, just let us know. Thank you, Thor.
Yeah, thank you.
I trust that you are aware of the momentum we had before COVID with nonprofit corporations in the community in general in moving forward on this.
Yes.
If you receive data that's accurate and quicker, does it shorten us closer to the four month timeline as opposed to like six months?
Yes. But as Jim mentioned, data collection is often one of the most difficult parts because we have a questionnaire. It's almost finished, a questionnaire and a data request for each of these departments. And sometimes, you know, the information we asked may be readily available and some of it, they may have to assemble from various computer programs and so forth. So sometimes that can be difficult. Uh, you know, I've, I've heard rumor that, that the data collection process in Willy County is probably much easier than most counties we encounter from past experience. So that would be good. The faster we can get that, the faster we can move along because, you know, we can't really do anything until the data is collected and then we do the analytics and then we can talk about the what ifs and what can we have. Yeah, we're in the process of trying to gather who all the committee is and so forth and establish kickoff meeting. Oftentimes, we wait till after the data is collected to have kickoff meeting, but we think in this case, it might be better to have kickoff meeting while we're collecting the data. Because if people understand what the process is, does, you know, it's what we have as a process. If they understand what the process is and what the final results hope to be, then, you know, we get them excited and we get them, you know, more involved in that process early on and help expedite the process in general. Again, I've heard a lot of these types of studies. I don't want to call it rhetoric because that sounds negative. I don't mean anything. What is the product that's going to come out of this? Often we get all this information, but I don't feel like that helps me as a tool. What kind of product are we going to get for this mind recentering company? Well, this is the one thing that that we press the commissioners that is that what this study that we do is is different than what many other people, most people out there are doing. Most people are focused on the facility. You know, what is the facility? How big is it? How much is going to cost? We want to go, we have to take a couple of steps back from that. And what is the system? And what is the process? So one of the things we're going to do is we're going to diagram, what is the justice system today? What is that continuum of services today? Well, where are the gaps? And then we will, because what we'll be doing, you know, we're, we're, we don't know everything about everything. You know, our job is to be, you know, we have a lot of experience in this. It's a job to be a facilitator here to bring out and facilitate those experts in the room and the county. Bring out what, what are those gaps? How do we define this and what are, what do we need to do? So the, the recommend, the recommendations that are going to come out of it are here are, here is what you have now. There's what can be improved within what you have now. Here are new programs that we could potentially institute. And then from a physical standpoint, what would it take to find, provide space and staffing to build the system? And then, you know, how is that implemented?
Sorry.
No, go ahead, please. Yeah.
If I could, if I could also explain kind of where, how we got here. Several years ago, when it was apparent that Parkview Whitley was going to build a new building, they sent the architect to every department and simply asked, what are your needs? What would you need in a new, in a new facility? And I just thought that was a brilliant way to go because, you know, I don't know your job and, and this is where, this is where you learn what some needs, some of your needs are. So that's why I continue to call this a needs assessment. We need to figure out what we need now and twenty years from now. So that's kind of how the whole process started on this one.
I guess I refer back to the fact that what was brought up about a lot of work has already been done. A lot of the puzzle pieces and things have already been gathered. So not negating towards what you guys do, but you're just going to, I guess I'm trying to figure it out. Like Judge Paul said, what, what are we paying for? What are you going to hand us at the end of it? And is this something that we've already done a good portion of the work on and you guys need to fit together so people can understand everything? Or what pieces haven't we done yet?
Well, the last thing we want to do is provide you a study that sits on a shelf that collects dust. You probably have a thousand of those in this building, right? We, we don't need to do that. What we're going to give you is a working and living document that is a, that it's, it's an action plan. And if, if there has been work done before about these programs or these particular providers, that certainly expedites the process. But it's more than, it's more than asking the various departments what you need. Because, you know, we're, we're collecting data and we're doing our own analysis. You know, asking what people's needs are is kind of almost anecdotal information. The data we collect is to do an actual analysis of the data and using our experience and works with hundreds of counties over the years. You know, we can help, you know, with our experience meshed in with experience in the, because every county's priorities are different. So the people that work here in this county, you know, that's kind of like the DNA of the county. And, you know, those are the priorities of the county. And what we do is we can layer in what we have seen in other places and what we have done in other places. But again, that end product is going to be a report and a PowerPoint. We do a lot of our report at PowerPoint because nobody reads, you know, a book that's five hundred and eighty-three pages. But if we can summarize it into, you know, a hundred pages of a PowerPoint and bullet points and then fill in the detail of action plans, that's, that's what the result. But there will be a, a yeah, I don't want to make it about buildings, but a buildable plan, an actionable plan.
I think as Mr. Amber said, you know, the judge's job and vice versa. So a lot of that and, well, we're looking at everybody doing their day to day job and duties and tasks and stuff like that, trying to pull all that together. You know, things, same things occurring, like I said, we're kind of working. They're looking for that. What do we need if we're, for the next twenty years? And everybody's busy doing their own thing, but nobody's really pulled all this together to try to help give you a solution, a plan, a plan of attack. And here's what we see with community corrections. Here's what we see with the jail. And it's a combination of things, I think, that we, we bring to table. I know one of the things Joe talked about a lot is a lot of times what we bring to the table is an action plan. Like you said, nothing, something that's not going to sit on the shelf. It's an action plan for you guys to, to proceed with for the next twenty years to say, okay, here's what we need to do. Here's the steps. Here's the process. Sometimes you don't get those recommendations or some of this focuses on one aspect of your, of your justice system that's the jail, but there's a lot of other things out there that could help. But as he said, the needs are changing. And we're seeing that, I mean, we're working in Michigan and Florida. You're starting to see the dynamics of what's happening in different states as well. So there's different recommendations, different solutions.
To feel, know how to ask this and not sound derogatory, but we have a lot of preconceived notions about what we think we need.
Right.
Are you going to tell us what we want to hear?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Because I'll, I'll tell you, it, it's hard. And I, you know, I've got the gray hair to show for it and so forth. But we come into this with no preconceived ideas. Yeah, but like I said, the world is changing and, you know, you, you have, you have people and organizations in this York County that are actually well respected around the state. And so, you know, you have to leverage that expertise. But again, our, our, our value is having gone through this process a number of times before, we can facilitate bringing out the best answer for Willy County.
So she have, we have input feedback from other states to see what they're doing for other programs.
We hope at the end you like what we say, but, you know, our, our job, to be honest, not telling what you want here.
It's not necessarily true with everyone who does this.
So at this point, you have a request then for using forty nine thousand two hundred dollars from the new local option income tax, the increase?
Yes.
So how would counsel like to move forward with the request?
We approve it.
I make a motion that we approve the request. Is that a motion?
Bill made a motion.
I second it.
Yeah. So you're going to second Bill's motion? Is there any further discussion? It's my understanding this, this is this usage of the forty nine thousand two hundred dollars is just for this action plan, for the study?
Yes, from the guilt.
Okay, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. And opposed the same, that's one.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
The next thing that, that we had on our list was like you were always trying to figure out ways to save money and it, it looked like it's not a huge savings, but if we switch the county telephone system from having to pay centrally every month to an internet based system, we're going to save about four hundred dollars a month or over four thousand dollars in, in a year. So we have a quote from SDS Communication. We think it'll be like a three year payback on this, on this quote and we would, we would like to have your approval to go ahead and switch the phones over based on the SDS's quote.
Where will that money come from, Dom? Where are you asking that money to come from?
Well, it probably should come from telephone, honestly. I, I would say.
I don't understand that.
We have line, line telephone.
So it'll come out of your budget?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I would think that would be the.
So you're not asking for any more money? You're just asking to switch the phones?
Yes.
Don, have you tried this? I mean, is there any way to try it before you do it?
No. They, they've been on it for a while.
No, you had no problems or?
I can't say no problems when I first started, obviously. The servers would be down. We do keep a cell phone. We have another phone. It's not just the residential, but it doesn't happen very often.
So you like it?
Yes, yes.
And this is just for county administrative offices, nothing to do with our nine one one?
Nothing to do with dispatch? No.
Correct. This is to install two systems, one, the jail, one of the government center. What about the online, like, well, you already got the system highway department?
Uh, we're catching everything.
Okay.
The, the the only thing that, that we can't touch will end up to be about four fax machines. So, but we are going to eliminate the number of fax machines in the county because we have more than what we really need. So much stuff's done by email now instead of fax. So we'll be cutting down on the number of fax machines.
Hold on, dig them and install that. Roughly, I don't.
Probably do it.
Thanks, Jeff.
We can probably do that. I would say within like two weeks or a month, we would do it in base implementation. So we wouldn't have any downtime. No allergies as far as that. So we could go by department to department. That's why there's the jail system and the deputy center. We won't touch anything in dispatch, nothing in nine one one, just be in the planning as far as that. So getting the equipment with everything from distribution, you can get it in three or four days. And then we just set up a, a scheduling time by the department.
Are there, is this an annual contract then for service?
One, what's that? The, one thing you'll see annuals on the actual clarify part of it, and that's the, the new phone lines, which would be like what Central would do.
So is there any kind of a performance guarantee or an opt out if we're not satisfied?
The user, like I can do, I can talk to the vendor as far as that, but they don't really have a problem with that. If there's an issue, like I said, Paul's been on the system as far as that. So we're trying to bake in as many redundancies that we can put in there for the kind of a catastrophic issue as far as that. So and we found out we couldn't change anything on the jail side of it, but nine one one dispatch, we just left that alone as far as that. But there was a lot of places where we could save dollars from what you're currently paying with Central and some of the lines that are not even being used anymore. And to Don's point with the faxes, we've kind of scrubbed them down to give you more cost savings per month.
I understand what we're asking for now is to approve taking this from the twenty two thousand dollars from the jail tax to cover this. Is that what we're trying to?
Commissioners line item on the telephone bill or telephone. I'll make a motion to prove it.
No.
I'll second that motion.
So I have a motion in a second. And, and there's plenty of funds in that line item?
Um, there's, there's actually a balance right now and there are sixteen thousand eight ninety nine. Either additional or transfers.
Probably have to do additional.
So currently there's not enough funds in that line item to cover that expense. So they will need to come back and do an additional, a request for additional appropriation.
Would that be an additional appropriation or transfer of funds from another?
That would work too. That, that would work also. I'm sure we can find other places to take, to make up the, the difference.
Out of your budget, out of the commissioner's budget?
Okay.
So I do have a, a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, opposeds?
Thank you. And the, the last item I have along that line is trying to shore up the protection for, for dispatch. We would like to enter an agreement with J and K to provide twenty four seven, three sixty five protection for the dispatch system. And that, that quote was about, oh, and that, that would add a new add a new recorder too, a, a better recorder. That total cost is about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, but they have agreed to do it in, on a, over five years. And the nine one one funds have sufficient amount of money. That, that's where the money would come from is nine one one funds.
When you say protections, can you elaborate on that? I don't know.
Maintenance and breakdowns.
Okay.
Fixing anything, anything that needs.
No, no new equipment, just no new equipment in that?
The, the, the new recorder, Tom.
Okay.
New recorder. Yeah. We just felt like if we're going to spend that kind of money, that the recorder is kind of the weak sister here. So let's just replace the recorder also. Recorder can save you or, or hurt you down the road sometimes, but at least it's, it's there. Everything's recorded.
So this price pays for everything that they would do. So we have a breakdown in the middle of the night on a holiday. So we have a breakdown in the middle of the night on a holiday, on a weekend, they're going to come out and do it. And there's no additional charges for it? That's all.
No, no, no additional charge, no, 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 you're paying, you're, you're paying upfront.
That's all that contract.
Paying upfront, yes. So you request your permission to, to go along with the, with the program and pay for it through 911 funds.
So is CenturyLink our primary phone system and we have a backup? Or how, how does this work? Because if it goes down, JK's going to come and repair it, but we still need 911 service in the time it takes that to happen. So do we have another provider who is our emergency backup?
No, okay, we're not really talking that side. We're, we're talking radio equipment, computer equipment, yeah, not the 911 lines.
No, just a two way.
The equipment that we have now, did that come from, did we purchase from JK?
Yeah. That, and we've paid that off. We don't, we don't, aren't paying them anymore for the equipment.
I make a motion that we give the commissioners permission to do the protector. Is that what you call the protection?
Maintenance protection.
Maintenance protection. Second. Yes.
All right, so I have a, a motion in a second for the commissioners to enter an agreement with JK Communication for a maintenance protection plan. Did I say that right?
Perfect.
All right. So I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. And opposed the same, and then also pass 17.
Thank you.
Then Don, that'll just roll us right into the commissioner.
It does, does a nice segue. Well, it's with the heavy heart that I had to report that Ed Robinson, our HR person, is no longer with us. He has chosen to leave our employment. So, and it's so fresh that you can ask me any questions, but I don't have any answers yet. So we're not sure, we're not sure what we're, what we're going to do. We're, we're sort of thinking about even looking at a third party, not a, not another employee at this particular time. So also we are working with a couple of different organizations with our interest is to bring broadband to the entire county. So we are working with two, two, two companies on that. One seems only, from my perspective, only seems to want to do Columbia City. And we had to remind him that was just 28% of the county, the other 72% needs, needs the broadband. So I don't know how we'll go with that, that company with that, with that attitude. We were advised, let's see, I got this on June the 30th. The Indiana Criminal Justice Institute is seeking applications for the coronavirus emergency supplemental funding program. This federal reimbursement grant seeks to provide funding to eligible counties to prevent, prepare for and respond to the coronavirus. So my mind went right away to, all that came to us, you guys a while back saying we need, you know, we're losing our money. Well, we think this is, we think this is the program that will shore up those expenses. And so we have asked our grant administrator, Lori Shipman, to apply for the grant and we're in the process. The grant, the applications have to be until later than the 7th, September 17th. So it's not something that's going to happen in the next couple of weeks, but we're looking, we're looking into that and.
Is there a possibility for reimbursement for funds that we already allocated to our direction?
Yeah. Yeah, and, and funds for, hey, we, you know, we had to shut down, we lost whatever the number is, so.
I think you got some big word from 4H, Hank, who's got the same problem that they want to talk about.
Okay.
We'll, we'll get there.
Yeah, I just, but it just happens, it's going to kind of fit into what you're talking.
Yep.
Becky Solway from, from the Council on Aging came to us with their, their new grant is actually, it's going to be an 18 month grant. Starts, started July 1st, will go through December 31st of 2021.
The 21.
To 21, end of 21. In that grant that they're going to get, and it's, it's a bigger grant than they've had. But one of the reasons it's bigger is because they'll no longer be able to charge for their services. Their services will be free. So that's one of the, one of the reasons the grant is higher than it had been. So that's just FYI. Probably one of the biggest things we did yesterday was to make sure we signed the covered bridge certification. Being facetious, we, we, we have to report to the state that we don't have any covered bridges. We did that, so you'll sleep better knowing we've got that reported, right? It's into them right now, okay. I don't have anything else. Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
4H update.
Sure. Well, I had to come to the council and give you all an update on Fair. We've worked very, very hard this spring with all of the changes and restrictions, being a rather large, you know, being the large community event in the, in the county. We work with all of our 4H leaders, 4H extension staff, we're with Scott at the Health Department. Come up with a document that we've submitted through Purdue and the State Board of Health. We did get official approval back from that. Basically, it ended up in a 60 page document that we submitted with a COVID-19 plan for the fair to be able to do and make a, what we term as, as normal of a fair as we possibly can. We're going to have some reductions on the amount of folks in the grandstands. We're going to be, have a lot of additional signage, reminding folks socially distance, wear a mask if they can socially distance, a lot of those things. Kind of go along with that. We've worked with our extension staff, our extension homemakers, our Ag Museum folks, as far as what they felt comfortable offering as well. So kind of the plan for Fair, all of our livestock shows will be show and go, what we call a show and go format. So the animals will come in, get checked in, weighed in, classes divided, the animal will show and then we'll go home the same day. We thought that with the recommendation of Purdue, this is going to eliminate kids just kind of hanging out in the barn and those kind of things. But yeah, still give them a chance to exhibit the projects that they've worked hard on. Some folks, you know, some of the larger livestock pieces, you know, as much as a year. Same with our on the hill projects, those will still be on display. We'll be doing some grandstanding events, again, a limited amount of attendance. We're running it with Scott's recommendation of 50 to 60% capacity of the grandstand. So it's still going to have a few, a demo derby, a couple, some of those kind of things as well. That's kind of go along with that though, the COVID-19 has really impacted us as a nonprofit pretty heavily this spring. We rely real heavily on two major sources of income for the year. One of those is the fair, the concessions that are entered.